I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting for Monday, February 5th, 2024, to order at this time, and we'll ask our Assistant County Manager, Carrie Sanders, to lead us in the invocation.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you and conduct the business of Onslow County. Lord, be with the commissioners and their deliberations, and bless them with wisdom and guidance as they address the items on today's agenda. Bless our citizens, first responders, and those defending our nation. May all we do this day bring you honor and glory. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call Ms. Lexi Gilkey up to lead us in the pledge. She is a representative from the Onslow County 4-H, and her team just recently went to NC State in the AVN Bowl and moved on to sixth place in the nation. So, Lexi?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I know we have a couple of elected officials in here. We'll start, since I always keep forgetting to look in the back, as we have our Sheriff, Chris Thomas, in the back with us, and North Tops Beach Alderman, Rick Grant, here with us in the front. Do we have any other? Amiga Darman is here, Register of Deeds, as well. I think I've gotten everyone that is here this morning. We appreciate you coming in and being a part of this. And at this time, we ask that all in attendance, please set your cellphones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue upon which the Board of Commissioners has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedure, Commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the Commissioner comment period on the agenda. So, we'll move to item one. We need a motion for the adoption of today's agenda.
So, move.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, the agenda has been approved. Item number two is the consent agenda approval. If there's any Board members that have questions or concerns about any of these items that need to be removed and put on the agenda, let us know. If not, we need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So, move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, consent agenda is adopted. At this time, I'll turn public comment over to Mr. Smitherman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This afternoon, or this morning, we have no one signed up for public comment.
Well, it'll take us right into public hearing, sir.
Yes, sir. Our first public hearing is for the Rawls rezoning, Rawls New rezoning, and Carter Metcalf will present this case to the Board.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and our County Commissioners. Our first public hearing this morning is the Rawls New rezoning request, PRAZ 2023, number 29. The applicant is Charles A. Rawls, on behalf of the Louis K. New, executor of the state. The overview of the request is from Rural Agriculture to Community Business, or R-A to C-B. The tax map number is 1307-19. It's located at 108 Sandridge Road. It's the intersection of Sandridge Road, which is 1501, and Starling Road, which is 1500, and located in the Swansboro Township. It's 3.57 acres, and the existing uses, there's a vacant residential structure, and some of the property is still forested. An overview of the services, there is a 16-inch unwashed water main along Sandridge Road, and an 8-inch unwashed water line. The wastewater for nearby properties is individual septic systems. And the fire services are the Hubert Fire District, who have an ISO rating of six. Our most recent traffic count comes from 2021, and with a trip count of 4,200. Staff estimates capacity at 13,600 for NC Highway 172. The school serving the property is Sandridge Elementary, Swansboro Middle, and Swansboro High School. And as we take a look at the zoning map here, you can see the property's location there at the intersection of Starling and Sandridge. There's nearby rural agriculture zoning, as well as R-A-M, which is that darker pink. That lighter pink is R-15. So, we take a look at the two zoning districts. Rural agriculture is a minimum lot size of 20,000 square feet, or 0.46 acres. The purpose of that district is maintain that rural development pattern and preserves the agricultural character of the county. While the proposed zoning district is community business, there's no minimum lot size, and its purpose is to accommodate small-scale retail service, and again, to cater commercial uses to that nearby community. Should typically be located at the intersection of collector or arterial roads, excuse me. Now, as we look at the comprehensive plan, there's two categories here, and then we'll see where they fall on the map. So, the first is area-wide commercial activity center. This is to be centered along major intersections, and it's, again, to be developed for auto-oriented land uses, such as those would be distribution, warehousing, or light industrial. You know, think of things that would be highly dependent on a major corridor of the county. While the other one is high-density residential, this is to accommodate for high-density, single-family residential developments, and again, its purpose uses would be high-density, single-family, and multifamily. Now, we see where this lays on the map. So, we had an area-wide commercial activity center. It's kind of centered on the intersection of Highway 172, and also Freedom Highway up there, just out of the screen to the northwest. And again, there's also some pockets of commercial up there, and so that spread down, and then we decreased in density to high-density residential. So, we look at the flood zones. There's no regulated flood zones on the property, only some nearby AE there along Meeting House Branch. And take a look at reasonableness in the public interest. Could be considered reasonable because community business is a corresponding zoning district to area-wide commercial, excuse me, area-wide commercial activity center, and it's, the subject property is located at the intersection of two collector roads, supported by a number of policies of comprehensive plan. Summary of those is that were to support a wide range of commercial activities. Could be considered unreasonable because community business does not align with high-density residential. And then there's two policies of comprehensive plan, again, just looking for more larger commercial spaces rather than isolated parcels. We take a look what happened at Planning Board. So, it was initially heard on November 2nd, and there were several citizens that came out at that time. They were concerned along the traffic along Starling Road, and how that would be affected from rezoning this piece of property. Planning Board directed staff to look into this further, and continued the hearing to December 7th. Staff looked into these issues, which were Starling Road and NC 172's intersection. DOT has conducted a traffic study for that interchange, and has found that a light would be the best solution for it. However, the cost of that would be north of $370,000, and so NC DOT is looking for funding for that project. But they have no official timeline for installation at this time. Then, as well, was discussed the Queens Creek Bridge replacement. DOT is exploring alternatives, such as replacing the bridge in place with an off-site detour, looking at creating a new replacement just south of that, or as well, working on some sort of combined solution. So, staff looked into those issues, presented that to the Board at December 7th, and the Board then voted unanimously to recommend approval of that request. The applicant spoke on behalf of it as well. One citizen did email in this morning and concern comment, and that has been provided to the clerk to the Board. Here's a look at the property there. You can see, again, it's currently partially forested, as well as relation to the intersection. Then, as we take a little bit of a tighter look, you can see that abandoned residential structure there, just to the west of where that label is of Sandridge Road. And we take a look at what it's like. If you're standing at the intersection of Starling and Sandridge, you would see the sign that we placed on the property in clear view as you're driving along Sandridge, but that's what it looks like from that corner. You can see that little section is cleared, but still forested, and then to the left side of your screen is that abandoned residential structure. And on, so, is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed zoning map amendment of PRAZ 2023, number 29, and adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment, and authorize the Chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. This concludes the staff presentation at this time.
Mr. Chairman, we have four speakers for today's public hearing, and we'll open the public hearing now and call on Jerry Hillard.
Good morning. Sure, it's nice to be with you fine people this morning. Just wanted to know that I did go to the Planning Board meeting, gave my opinion. Shortly thereafter, I heard that the deal was done, and the zone was changed, and apartment hot complex was going in. Then, I just hear this weekend that I'm here to report to you. Anyway, I live at 174 Starling Road, Hubert, and a lot of people call it Liberty Corner. I have three names: Jerry Hillard, Crazy Jerry, and you're the guy that works in the yard all the time. Can you imagine me trying to sign my check with that third name? Anyway, I've read some of the complaints about the birds and the traffic and the safety. I'm not going to waste your time repeating it. Instead, I'm going to tell you a little bit about me and my home. I bought my home in 2019. For the past four years, I've spent over $40,000 in the yard and outside my home. $80,000 inside. I have many, many 12-plus hours a day working on my home. I've put my heart and my soul into my home. Now, during those four years working in the yard, I've met thousands of people. While they drive past the front of my house on Starling Road to get stopped in the stop sign early in the morning, rush hour, we talked. I was out there working. They love what I've done, and they really show their appreciation and thank me for improving the place. Yes, I could have brought those hundreds, or maybe thousands, in here, but I wouldn't do that to you. Instead, I'll speak for them. That being said, I want you to do something for me, please. I want you to think very hard and work with me. Think about this. I want you to put you and your family in my house. You now live there. I want you to remember how much you spent on your house in the last four years. I want you to remember how hard you worked on your house. I want you to remember that you put your heart and your soul in that house, because it's your last rodeo. Then, I want you to think, if that was you, and somebody knocked on your door since your letter said they're going to change the zoning right next door, would you want it done? Would you want it done? In conclusion, we all know that's going to cost $370,000 for a traffic signal at that intersection. Now, why you'd want to spend $370,000 on an intersection that's a T-road, I have no idea. The one thing I want to say is those thousands of people, and myself, we've always been there when you needed our support. We're now asking for your support. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is Charles Mallett.
Good morning to all of you. I'm going to just speak as much as I can, because I want to add a little personal touch to the decision that you apparently not, I've understood it's already a done deal, but I think the situation still needs to be looked at very closely, and it gets real personal with it. We've got probably 393 people on a petition who also feel like I do. So, I'm not just standing here by myself, but I happen to be on the corner that's going to be right opposite. I'm going to be facing this new commercial property that you put, going to be putting in place there. We already have commercial property across from the cemetery, and that commercial property, you would think, oh, it's a, it's a storage area. We have felon stations beyond that, no, but a storage area. But what would ultimately be, be a confidential thing, a quiet thing. At night, many times, the storage area is opened up, and bands start playing, practicing, and it comes out to a residential section. This property, even though it's red lines around it, is in the middle of people's homes, personal. And I'm sure each one of you would not like to walk out your front door, or even be sitting in your living room, listening to the commercial problems that are developing, that would be a part of that. There's no more to say. There are other things that need to be considered as well. Being able to get fire support down our way. We have a volunteer fire department out there that is already taxed to the limit, and being able to get them back through that area, that intersection there, is a real problem, because many of the volunteers come from down the Sandridge Road. They have to go down to Sandridge, get out on Highway 24, go down and get to the fire department, only to come back and try to put out a fire. We have had people who are in the family, who are firemen, to say, if a house catches on fire down there, we're going to have a problem. And here, we're talking about putting up a structure that is going to not only cause more congestion at a critical intersection, but other problems that will be developed. We picked up more trash and take, help people who come down that Sandridge Road, who happen to be, forget there's a stop sign there, some of them at night. They're going so fast, they go up into the, they hit the embankment at the cemetery there, and put themselves into the cemetery prematurely. Some of them cut their throats, they're going so fast to do that. Another problem, another problem that has to be looked at as well, is just a block down on the far side of 172, you have the Marine Corps Landing Zone there. In the landing zone, they're taking off and coming in all hours of the day and night, and that has to be attended to as well. But I hope you'll be able to listen to these other 393 people, and there are more coming even now. Some of them really have some real problems with that, and I think you should know about them. I thank you for your time this morning.
Mr. Chairman, our next speaker is Debbie Mallett.
You can tell, overly. I'm Debbie Mallett. In Swansboro, they call us the Malletts, but thank you for pronouncing our name correctly. We're come to you as actual residents of the neighborhood. Jerry, our neighbor, lives on the corner of 172 and Starling. We live on the corner of Sandridge and Starling. The maps that Mr. Metcalf was pointing out, we're very familiar with it. We can stand in our front yard, looking from our house, and go across the small two-lane rural road that they're proposing be rezoned to commercial. I know some of you may have gone and visited the area. It's one thing to visit, it's another to live there. And while there are people who could not make this 11 o'clock meeting this morning, I know you'll have another meeting in the evening and so forth, people expressed to us, please let the folks know, our commissioners know, that we need to express what it's like living in this area and driving down this road. Hopefully, decisions haven't been made, even though we've been told, hey, money talks, implying that you need to get, that we need to get used to changes. We've been there 40 years. We know about change. We're a Marine Corps family. Life is all about changes. We wives always have to have a Plan B, C, or whatever. We know that. But there's also the type of entity that you're proposing, or that's being proposed. We loved Mr. Mrs. New, the older couple who lived right across the street. Their house is now a shack. We love the new family. We've even had probably one of their sons or grandsons build cabinets for our home. Mrs. New used to tell me, she said, I said, "Ms. New, how old are you?" She said, "Honey, it won't make me any older or any younger if I tell you." Well, when she passed away a few years ago, I went into the cemetery, which is just right up the road, right across the road and up, and I saw Mr. Mrs. New and where they've been laid to rest. So, we respect where we are. I'd like to read just briefly parts of the petition. This was emailed to you on Wednesday. Rose said I needed to get it to you, and I got it to you by noon with the DOT report we had requested, which of course is just for the intersection, which is 172 and Starling. That's just one short block. I walked it the other day. Just a short block down to this crucial intersection. But those statistics apply. Anybody that goes through Starling and 172, they come right through our intersection as well. I've mentioned some of the things that are in this petition. The wildlife in our area. Just the other day, turkeys right out in the yard, right at 1 o'clock in the afternoon. Deer, red-headed woodpeckers, all kinds of foxes and squirrels and so forth, would have to be relocated, and how they get relocated, they get moved out. We're respectful of the cemetery that's next to us, but mainly, we are very cognizant of the heavy traffic and heavy load of cars that come through there. We have a petition that has gone out, and the only 10 days that we're allowed are that we're formally notified of what needs to be done. We have over, as Charlie said, 392, 393 names as of 8 o'clock this morning, that have signed saying, please let the people know. Everything that's in this petition, we are in agreement with it. We want to keep it as a residential area. So, there's 392 of the people that are your constituents, people who care about this area, Marines and their families who have lived down here. I have a couple of comments I wanted to read to you, and I knew five minutes wouldn't be long enough for me, but I'll talk quick. Some of the folks said, please express this to you. Woman who wanted to be here today, lives down the road. Her husband has had some issues. She said, "I support the voices here today who address the quality of life issues that ongoing development causes." She wants to talk about life itself. In May of 2023, if the EMS people had not gotten down the road to her house, her husband would have died. He spent days in the Naval Hospital, had to go to Greenville, ECU, et cetera. That was horrendous. Many parents have said, the school is, the traffic is terrible. Everything that goes down to Sandridge, as Mr. Metcalf mentioned, Sandridge Elementary backs up into the Sandridge-Starling entrance. These are our intersection. Starling Road goes this way. There's only two places to enter on it. When Queens Creek Bridge is repaired, whatever is determined, those folks will have to come down our way. Now, I've been told, hey, it's just, it's just going to be for a short time, that you can live with it. You try living with it. That's going to be tough. Someone says it's already hell now. It will be horrendous when that happens. Other homes are being built, more commercial areas. We just say, these folks, we love the news. They may need to sell the land. We want them to sell it, but please do not put something commercial there that will impact thousands of people who currently live there and who will be impacted. Thank you for listening. We wait to hear your response, and I'll report back to the almost 400 people what your decision is. Thank you now.
Mr. Chairman, our final speaker today is John New.
Good morning, everybody. I'm John New. I live at 122 Barber Road, and actually, Starling Road, the four-lane, whenever it's put in, cuts Starling Road in two. So, I'm actually right across the highway from where these people are living. I know that intersection is busy. They're talking about people running to the graveyard. That's been going on since the road was paved back in 1970. You know, that has not got nothing to do with the traffic, it's the people driving. And they keep talking about the intersection at 172 and Starling. The intersection that they're talking about is actually Starling and Sandridge Road. And me looking at it, my mother lived right there at 136 Sandridge Road, and up until a year and a half, that's where she lived. That's where we grew up at. When you come to the stop sign on rig, Sandridge, you've got traffic coming from the right, which is a dead end road at the four-lane, but there's a Hawkins Creek Campground down there, and I don't know how many families are there. There might be 152, 100 families. So, when you come to the stop sign, you're watching towards the right to make sure somebody don't come. But the traffic coming from the left from 172, a majority of those people don't use a turn signal. So, you're at the stop sign, wondering, are they going to come past me and go down to the dead end, or are they going to turn on Sandridge Road? So, a possibility might be a three-way stop sign right there. That way, at least you know everybody coming to that intersection is going to stop, and I feel like that's part of the problem right there. I rode down Sandridge yesterday, and there's at least 15 businesses already on there, Sandridge Road. There's a Dollar General there. If you cross the four-lane on 172 between Hubert Boulevard and the four-lane, there's another Dollar General. So, both of those stores, about any time in a day you go by there, there's cars all in them parking lots. So, that kind of tells you some community businesses in the area, people will probably need some of those, you know, or they wouldn't have put $2 Generals right there. Over on Barber Road where I live, when we grew, you know, moved there in 81, there were very few houses there. Now, I've got a housing project on three sides of me. 45 houses built right around me. I'm right in the middle of them. I didn't like that. I would have liked to sit there and watch the deer out in the field, but changes come. The county's growing. We've got two cement plants in Hubert. Anytime you see them cement trucks leaving that driveway, they're going to pour foundation somewhere. So, everybody knows the county is growing. When you go down Sandridge Road, the first two curves you go, you're turning to the left. The next curve is to the right, and there's probably 250, 300 acres cleared right there right now. And y'all might know anything about it. Is that going to be another 300 houses built there? You know, if it is, that's that many more people that might, would like a little community business there on that corner. That's about all I got to say. I appreciate y'all's time.
Mr. Chairman, I'll now close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion, I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion to deny the rezoning request by Mr. Rawls.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. And to clarify for everybody before we go into discussion, that was a motion to deny the rezoning. Any discussion?
Yeah, definitely. You know, I appreciate all these folks that don't want development. I understand. I think people need to realize that the RA zoning allows commercial development. It allows some multifamily development. These folks are going to develop that corner one way or the other. They have a right to develop their land, and I think that by denying this rezoning request, we're just going to force them to do something that's probably not as good for the community as what they want to do. So, I definitely oppose the motion, and I'll vote against it.
Let me, let me just, just say something. You know, we have over 350 citizens that come here and voice their concerns, and we have a public hearing. You go through the Planning Board. Because they unanimously approve something does not mean that we agree as Commissioners. It's our responsibility to look at their recommendation. It's our responsibility to look at their recommendation and then make our own determination. Now, I believe in, in expansion, and I believe that this county is growing, but I believe that we need to do it in a conservative fashion, that each public zoning issue is unique, depending on the citizenry, depending on that particular subdivision, and depending on what they're looking at. Now, we could, would have, could have, should have all day about, well, something worse is going to come, or, you know, et cetera. But when I, you know, I got elected to represent the folks, just like everybody else up here. And when I have citizens, over 300 citizens complaining about that, this is their home, I'm going to listen. And, you know, what really irks me is that I don't see Mr. Rawls here.
He's right there in front row.
Okay. I wish you would have spoke, sir, but I, from my personal standpoint, you know, I've got citizens that, that, that look to the county commissioners to do the right thing. And I don't think that the planning board unanimously approved this was the right thing. So that's why I made my motion to deny the rezoning request. And that's, that's how I feel. And, and I appreciate the citizens and the emails and the talks, the phone calls and everything else, because it gives me a chance, and the other commissioners, to hear your voices, that we're not sitting up here just making an arbitrary decision, because we represent you, and as such, we have to take that seriously. So I'm, I'm against the rezoning issue, obviously, because I proposed it, and we'll go from there.
I concur with Robyn Knapp on this issue. One of the things that Carter, you probably don't know, but that bridge in Queens Creek, it's been pushed back to 2030. 2030, that's a long time away for that bridge to be rebuilt and put back in there. So I want to let you know, I sit on a jumbo along with Mr. Bennett over here to my right, we both sit on that board, and that's not going to be, that's been pushed out quite always. We, we, we work for the citizens, we work for the people. And that's my stand on this.
My issue and concern is that we're leapfrogging, any type of, there's no business right there in that immediate area, and we're leapfrogging to, from RA to community business without a transition. I think I read somewhere in a comprehensive plan that there should be some type of transition built in there with the business offices or something. And so it's, it just doesn't seem appropriate to, to the area, to leapfrog and develop like that for community business. So that, that's something I thought was important to note.
Any more discussion? Just to note that, I don't know exactly what's going to be built there, but there's still a lot that can be done under the, the RA. Multi, multi, or two-family homes, I guess, those are townhomes, I would, I would suppose. But a good, I agree with Mr. Price, it's kind of, it's difficult when you look at the map and you see all of the RA, and you see the R8M, and then in the middle of it, we have a, a commercial business or community business there. So that makes it difficult and gets into kind of just spot-type zoning that takes place. So that's a concern for all of us, I believe. Do we have any further discussion, just to make sure? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to deny the rezoning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
All right, zone, the motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Metcalf will now come and present the Queens Haven rezoning number 2332.
All right, for our next rezoning item is the Queens Creek rezoning request, PRAZ 2023, number 32. The applicant is Tidewater Associates Incorporated, and the owners are South State Development LLC. Overview of this request is from residential eight manufactured to residential five, or R8M to R5. Tax map number is 1314-111. Its location is at 111 Queens Haven Road, SR number 1576. It's located in the Swansboro Township. The rezoning area is five acres, and the existing use is that it's currently vacant and forested. If we look at the services for the property, there's an eight-inch unwasse water line along Queens Creek Road, and an eight-inch unwasse sewer force main along Queens Creek Road as well. The fire service is from northeast Anzlo or Bear Creek with a ISO rating of four. Our most recent traffic count comes from 2018, so it is five years old, on Queens Creek, and a trip count of 9,700, with a staff estimated capacity of 13,600. Schools servicing the property would be Sand Ridge Elementary, Swansboro Middle, and Swansboro High School. And we take a look at the property, here you can see it there, outlined in black, again, currently R8M, which is what's across the street there from it, and then behind it is that purple R5. The R15 is that lighter pink, and then if you look at where it's labeled Queens Creek Road, is when you can see those two colors kind of transitioning there. I know it's kind of hard to, difficult to see there. If we look at the two zoning districts, R8M has a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate moderate to high-density single-family and multifamily development, with a special emphasis on allowing for manufactured housing. Then if we look at residential five, minimum lot size is 5,000 square feet, and its purpose is to accommodate high-density single-family and multifamily developments. Apology for that typo, I thought I had that corrected. But, keep on moving along. Medium-density residential is the future land use category, and provides for predominantly single-family residential developments. We take a look at the future land use map, that is the entire area is that medium-density residential. Now, if we look at the flood zones, there's no regulated flood zones on the property and no blue-line streams. If we look at the reasonableness in the public interest, the proposed rezoning could be considered reasonable due to adjacent residential five zoning, be supported by a few policies in the comprehensive plan stating we support diversity of housing type and style. While the proposed rezoning could be considered unreasonable because R5 is not a corresponding zoning district to the medium-density residential, the comprehensive plan would deem R5 as a high-density residential category. Look at the planning board meeting. They met at December 7th and heard the request and voted unanimously to recommend approval. The applicant spoke on behalf of their request, said the purpose is to extend their, their current development of Jack's Branch Townhomes, that is immediately to the west of the property. No citizen spoke against the request, and we've not had any petitions submitted to our office. We look at the aerials, and you can see the surrounding area, it's there right behind that gas station as you're making that curve on Queens Creek. We take a little bit of closer look there. You can see that Jack's Crossing Drive, that would be the Jack's Branch Townhomes. It's in the process of getting approved through our office. The first section has already been approved and those lots created, the rest are working through that process. Now, if we look at the property, there you can see the sign we posted, as well as the property being vacant and forested. So it's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider their proposed zoning ma, map amendment of PRAZ 2023, number 32. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. Concludes the staff presentation.
I'll now open the public hearing, Mr. Chairman, and seeing that no one has signed up to spoke, we will close the public hearing and turn it back over to you, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, our next matter is a request for a text amendment that Mr. Metcalf will present.
Good afternoon, Board. So our last request of the three is the winter 2023 subdivision ordinance text amendment, or the AOWE certification. It's ZTA 2023, number three. The applicant is the Planning and Development Department. So a bit of background, the state legislature passed House Bill 623, and this amended state statute 130A specifically around wastewater collection systems, also to be known as septic tanks. This provided for a new process called an authorized onsite wastewater evaluator, or AOWE. So this board has already seen changes brought by Ms. Hoover to make changes with environmental health, and planning is following suit, and so making adjustments to our ordinance to follow that process from state law. And what this would do would add another certification, so when property's being created, an authorized onsite wastewater evaluator could sign the map saying that the septic systems are going to work, and they will be the ones to properly file the permits. Currently, we allow for them to sign saying they will follow permits with environmental health or pursue the engineered option. So this is now a third process, it's going to create greater flexibility for folks out there in the county who are trying to pursue subdividing property, while ensuring that all property being created, though, could accommodate their wastewater concerns, whether through septic or a more centralized sewer system. And so the action before the board, respectfully request they consider the proposed subdivision text amendment of ZTA 2023, number three. Adopt a statement of consistency for the amendment and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county. Concludes the staff presentation.
Mr. Foster, at this time, we'll open the public hearing for this text amendment, and that, seeing that no one has signed up, we may close the public hearing and turn it over to the board for deliberation.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I do have some comments. Be it noted that we are required by law to, to allow this process to happen, and it will take some of the work, I think, off of our environmental health services, which is a good thing, but I also want to note that, for the citizens, that, that means our environmental health inspectors aren't approving the septic systems that are approved by these soil and water, soil scientists. I've already heard some complaints about systems that were approved that didn't actually work. And of course, those complaints go to our health department and our environmental services people, and they now have no control over what is permitted by these soil scientists. So I would just caution our citizens, when you see septic permits that are approved by a soil scientist, that that doesn't mean that they've been inspected or approved by our county department. Those, those permits are, are being let by outside people, and we have no control over that once they're approved by the soil scientists.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Finished with all the zonings, it looks like, or hearings, I guess. So, all right, we go to item five, the peddler's ordinance.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, the sheriff's office has requested that the county update its peddler ordinance. The current ordinance has not been updated in nearly 50 years, and changes are needed in order to comply with Supreme Court precedent. The proposed ordinance is largely consistent with the city of Jacksonville's ordinance, which was done intentionally so as not to create confusion amongst the citizens. In general, the proposed ordinance requires itinerant merchants to obtain a permit from the sheriff's office, and restricts the time in which the peddling, soliciting, or selling may occur. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the proposed peddler ordinance, and if it is deemed acceptable, to authorize the chairman to sign the ordinance, repealing and replacing the existing peddler's ordinance.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think this is important because, you know, senior citizens living in a neighborhood, especially, you know, who have these people come around and knock on their doors, and supposedly, they've talked to their neighbors, and they tell them that they need this and that and the other, and so ensuring that these folks have been looked into the background through the sheriff's office and that they've permitted them, you know, gives them, gives a little bit more reassurance to folks that they are legit.
Any further, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Yes, sir. Next item is accepting funds for women's health services, and our health director, Chrissy Hoover, will be presenting this matter.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. The North Carolina General Assembly made funding available that supports women's health services and programs. It distributes these to local health departments. The Anzlo County Health Department made application and was awarded $150,000 as part of this program. These funds do not require any county match. One of the approved strategies is the integration of community health workers into the agency's health service delivery. A community health worker is a trusted member of the community of people that we seek to serve. These community health workers really understand the services that we are trying to get to the individuals, and they also understand the settings that these people that we are seeking to serve come from. They're able to act as a liaison between us and them, and to help enhance the way that we deliver those services. Today, we are respectfully requesting that the Board of Commissioners consider acceptance of Agreement Addenda 175, supporting women's health service program funding in the amount of $150,000. Authorize the health director to sign necessary documents on behalf of the county and execute the necessary budget amendment. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer those.
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion?
Just a question. I'm, obviously, I'm very in favor of what the purpose of this, these monies are. Just for clarification, though, this is giving funding to a new position that will be?
15-month funding. These will be temporary positions that we'll have for 15 months, hopefully, that we would be able to reapply for additional funds through the same funding source, but that is the, that is how we intend to set this position up as, as a temporary position that would only last for 15 months.
Right, okay. So there's a good possibility that it would continue on after that, and if the funding wasn't available, I just always like to clarify this, because grants are great, and yet, it falls back on the county to then cover the, the cost of that if it goes away.
Yes, ma'am. We would either reapply for funding, or we would seek support from the Board of Commissioners in, in the budget year four.
Thank you.
That would be fiscal, not, we, we would have it for the remainder of this fiscal year, next fiscal year, so it would be 15 months out that we would have to be looking at.
And then I'm sure you would have numbers to show us that it was worth the investment.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, for the next item, I'm going to ask our ITS division, or Department Director, Glenn Hestet, to present a grant award.
Good morning, Commissioner, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Anzlo County has been awarded $53,000 as part of the North Carolina Emergency Management State and Local Government Grant Program. We submitted to replace our VPN and firewall, which is the very first piece of equipment between us and the internet. That's our first line of defense, so to speak, in the cyber, in the cyber war. The purpose of these grants is to raise everyone's cybersecurity stance across the state, so it's a very exciting part to be part of this. There is no matching funds required for this, and we would normally be paying, because again, our system is aging and we want to replace it, we'd be paying $23,5 annually to maintain the current system. This will pay for that system, for a new version of that system for the next five years. So I am, it is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the cybersecurity grant in the amount of $53,000, and authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents on behalf of the county, and I'm happy to answer any questions as needed.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, for the next two items that pertain to our airport, I'm going to ask Mitch Sprunger, the interim director, to present these two.
Chairman, Vice Chairman, Commissioners, good to see you all. The Yalber Jales Airport layout plan depicts sites for future general aviation development. By expanding the current general aviation area with new apron and taxiway pavements that can accommodate additional aircraft hangars and associated facilities, the airport will be better situated to meet current and future aviation demands and position the county for economic growth opportunities. This project will develop a schematic design based on federal aviation administration standards and aviation forecasts, and will prepare cost estimates for construction based on current costs in eastern North Carolina and through survey and geotechnical investigations. The project ordinance has a total cost of $100,000 and will be funded with State Airport Improvement Program grant dollars. Program grant dollars. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the South General Aviation Expansion Phase Two Project Ordinance, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the document on behalf of the county.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion or questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, and based on that project ordinance, WK Dixon Engineering has proposed Task Order Number Two in the amount of $97,127 to prepare preliminary schematic design for an expanded general aviation area. The design will be based on FAA Design Standards, aviation demand forecasts, and will prepare construction cost estimates predicated on current costs in eastern Carolina and through survey and geotechnical investigations at the proposed site. It is respectfully requested the Board of Commissioners consider approval of the WK Dixon Task Order Number Two for GA Development Preliminary Design, and if approved, authorize the chairman to sign the document on behalf of the county. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second. Discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to ask Kevin Turner, our Tax Administration Administrator, to come forward and present items F and G on your agenda.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, and Commissioners. As per North Carolina General Statute 105-369A, in February of each year, the tax collector must report to the governing body the total amount of unpaid taxes for the current fiscal year that are liens on real property. The total unpaid taxes for 2023 are $7,426,338.19, with a total of $7,347 bills due as of January 4, 2024. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the total unpaid taxes that are liens on real property, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Motion to approve.
Motion and a second. Any discussion, questions?
Mr. Turner, how does that compare with the last couple of years, that $7 million figure? How does that compare with the, if you've got that information?
Yeah, I've got it for last year. It's about $120,000 less than what it was last year.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Does that number include those that are making payments as a total?
Yeah, this, this total is as of January 24th, so it's changed based on the payments that have been made since that date.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, when do you, when do you have to calculate the percentage of collected taxes that we can use for the budget next year?
We're doing that almost daily. We're monitoring that, and we'll, we'll keep you abreast of those, of those changes as they occur.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Okay, next, as per North Carolina General Statute 105-369C, the county tax collector shall advertise county tax liens by posting notice of the liens at least one time in one or more newspapers having general circulation in the taxing unit. We are requesting to advertise the unpaid taxes on March 21, 2024. It's respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners approve the request to advertise the 2020 tax liens on March 21, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Our last matter for your consideration or general items today is a budget amendment to be presented by Lisa Marlin, our Deputy Finance Director.
Thank you, Mr. Smitherman. Good morning, Chairman Foster, Commissioners. It's my pleasure to present the following budget amendments for your consideration and approval this morning. Item B44 is a request from ITS to increase revenues and expenditures to fully budget the cybersecurity grant funds accepted earlier in item 5C. Item B45 is a request from the Cooperative Extension to increase their budget for grant funds that were received in a prior fiscal year but were unexpended. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the listed budget amendments, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, for the next items regarding appointments, I'm going to turn it over to our Deputy Clerk, Rose Outler.
Thank you.
Um, yes, there are a few appointments on this one. For the first one, we have the Board of Equalization and Review. The Board of Equalization and Review is comprised of five members annually appointed by the Board of Commissioners. The current term for the Board of Equalization and Review expires on February 28, 2024. Current members, Mr. Roger Riggs, Ms. Jennifer Kiefer, Mr. Charles Rawls, Mr. Todd Doherty, and Mr. Dennis Bragg have all expressed a desire to continue serving on the board for the next term. Mr. Charles Rawls is also willing to serve as chairman of the board. No other individuals have expressed an interest in serving at this time. The applications are on file and have been certified by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested to reappoint Mr. Roger Riggs, Ms. Jennifer Kiefer, Mr. Charles Rawls, Mr. Todd Doherty, and Mr. Dennis Bragg to the Board of Equalization and Review for a one-year term expiring February 28, 2025, and to consider the appointment of Mr. Charles Rawls as chairman.
So move. Second.
Motion and a second. All, or any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries.
And for the next one, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. The Onslow County Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee strives to effectively assess the wishes of the citizens of Onslow County regarding the needs, planning, and management for the quality of parks, facilities, and recreation programs, while also advocating for the improvement of these programs. Mr. Corey Case, Jacksonville category, Mr. Thomas Young, Richland Township category, Ms. Mary Thomas, At-Large category, and Ms. Carol McIntyre, Stump Sound category, their terms have expired as of June 30, 2023. All have expressed an interest in continuing their service and have completed the citizens' application, participant applications for this consideration. Mr. Ben Horak has expressed interest in representing the White Oak category and has submitted a citizen participation application. At this time, one other citizen has expressed an interest in serving to represent the Stump Sound category, Ms. Jennifer Vanek. A ballot has been provided for the Commissioners' convenience. The applications are on file and have been completed by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider filing the aforementioned seats on the Onslow County Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. Staff will hand out a ballot for the Commissioners' convenience so that they can indicate who they wish to fill each representative seat for a three-year term expiring June 30, 2026.
Have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Why are you doing it over there? We just voted.
Never mind, we voted, my fault.
I know, I know, you're am.
We're going to make a motion for you to count the ballot, Brett.
Mr. Chairman and Board, the elected members of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board are Mary Thomas, Ben Horak, Corey Case, Brian Young, and Carol McIntyre.
All right, and for the last appointment, we have the Library Board of Trustees. The Library Board of Trustees oversees the operations of Onslow County's public library in offering programs and informational materials to the citizens through books, audio visuals, and research materials. The Board of Trustees recommends policy to the Onslow Board, County Board of Commissioners, and plans long-range goals for the library. The Board of Trustees serves as an advocate for funding of the library. Ms. Nevadita Mattel has resigned as the Jacksonville Representative effective September 9, 2023. The clerk's office has received an application from Ms. Karen Moore for an appointment as a Jacksonville Representative. The application is on file and has been certified by the clerk's office. It is respectfully requested that the Board of Commissioners consider the appointment of Ms. Karen Moore for a remaining three-year term expiring on June 30, 2023, as the Jacksonville Representative.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, or any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, hearing none, motion carries. So, no consent items, so, Mr. Smitherman?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the board and the public today. Just like last meeting, we are cognizant that we continue to experience growing pains with regard to development in our community, and I just wanted to take the time, one, to say we will soon be making available for public comment the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, but also to say it's such great timing for this board to reconsider how we address land use issues in the county as we move through this process of land use planning. It's the first meaningful engagement the county's probably had since the inception of zoning in this community, so it's a great opportunity for this board to really take a step back and revisit how we want this community to develop. Second, today, I'd like to again thank the board and the staff that was involved in producing a wonderful day together last Wednesday at our first annual planning retreat. We got a lot of work done, and we're going to start slowly letting that trickle out to both the staff and the public. The first way we will see a difference based upon our deliberations last Wednesday is regular workshop meetings, monthly workshop meetings, and our first one will be held in a couple weeks later in February, where we will work on something that was one of your priorities, and that's establishing financial policies and amending our rules of procedure to allow for a new way of doing our monthly meetings, where we focus on deliberation and thinking and planning at our workshop meeting, and in the opposite meeting, we will conduct the business of the county. And just for clarity to the public, we will continue doing public hearings twice a month in the short term until this board decides if there is a more efficient and effective way to consider our monthly public hearings. That's all I have for today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would first send my condolences to a friend, a neighbor, and a former Marine and educator in Onslow County, Mr. Mike Smith, who passed away last week. My grandkids called him Mr. Mike, and I think that his service is going on right now, as a matter of fact. But what, when he had an emergency last week, it reminded me of why I live in the city of Jacksonville. I've lived in the city for almost 28 years, and over those years, I've seen several situations where there was an emergency that required medical assistance or fire assistance. And I note that, you know, within seconds, generally, very qualified police officers are on the scene, ready to give emergency medical help to somebody. Shortly thereafter, you'll see a fire truck show up with more EMT-qualified people who are able to help with medical emergencies, and our wonderful paramedics are there in due time. But my note is that, you know, I pay more taxes to live in the city because I want those services that I get in the city. County's never going to be able to charge or want to increase our tax rate to the point that we can provide that kind of service to the citizens of Onslow County. So I guess the point is, you make sacrifices if you don't want to live in the city limits. You sacrifice some of the services that we pay for. I know Robin and I pay for city services, and it's my opinion that I get my money's worth out of the city services, and I appreciate the city and the police department and the emergency services of the city, and I truly appreciate our paramedics and our emergency medical services and what they do to serve the citizens of Onslow County. So again, my condolences go out to Mr. Smith's family, and we'll keep them in our prayers as they go through this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bennett. Commissioner Scott? Well, I just want to wish everybody a great week. Got a lot of activities coming up, and be safe and be aware of your surroundings, and God bless you. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Price?
Our various steering committees met in the latter part of January for the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. Steering committees met in Raleigh. The Public Education Steering Committee, I was a part of, our focus was on my future NC and the goal of either having advanced certification or degrees in the hands of those 25 to 44 years of age by 2030. You're having 2 million people, you have either a degree or advanced certification by 2030. They kind of updated us on where we were, and of course, Coastal Carolina Community College is doing a lot to try to get those folks in, and if you get a degree in HVAC, I mean, you're always going to need heating and cooling, you're always going to need electrical help, plumbing, all of those types of vocational programs that are extremely important are a lot, where a lot of the jobs are right now, the good-paying jobs, too. And so we talked about that, and so that was a key item of discussion. Another thing I wanted to call attention to was the Chamber of Commerce met and had their celebration, celebrating the man and woman of the year. Congratulations to Ms. Eva Sullivan, who was the woman of the year as chosen by the chamber, and the man of the year, Senator Mike Lozara. So congratulations to those folks. Have a good afternoon and enjoy your day.
Thank you, Mr. Price. Commissioner Buchanan?
Thank you. I'm going to be a little bit long today. Usually, I'm the short fella. David, I want to thank you for the retreat, and I want to thank all the commissioners. We worked very hard, what we got done there, but you made a statement, and I had to do some research, but you made a statement saying the place has changed in 15 years. So bear with me just a minute. Detention Center and Sheriff's Office, Consolidated Human Services, Government Complex, New Airport Terminal, Control Tower, New Courthouse, Animal Service Expansion, New County Garage, New Shell, excuse me, New Sheriff's Department's Firearms Training Facility, Heinz Farm, several new schools, including the Skill Center, Public Safety Memorial, two Shell Buildings, EOC Expansion, we're working on Senior Services. There's a lot that's went on in the last 15 years you're talking about, David, and there's a lot of stuff that this community has done, and I'm going to echo a little bit of acknowledgement out there. I hope she don't get mad with me, but when we did the Consolidated Human Services, we had three ladies that put that together, and I want to acknowledge them because one of them's in the audience. I hope she don't get mad at me, but it was Angela Lee, Sherri Slater, and Heidi Bauer. The three of them worked very hard on putting that Consolidated Human Services building together, and it's one of our outstanding buildings we have, just like this complex. But a lot of people are saying, what have you all done? Well, I just shared with you, and if I miss something, somebody can correct me later on, but we've done a lot, and that's the commissioners that have been part of this. Some commissioners are brand-new to this, but I've been around for every single one of them, and I want to thank our staff and our management teams to where we are today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Commissioner Carper?
Well, my thunder got stolen, as usual, but that's okay. Just to piggyback on a couple of things, I want to echo what all the other commissioners have said. Mr. Smitherman, thank you very much for all that you did to invest in such a successful retreat that we had last week. My brain was about to explode afterwards because I was focusing so intently on it, but I just want to tell the citizens that are watching and listening how beneficial that was to the future of Onslow County, and one thing I've been very interested- was to the future of Onslow County, and one thing I've been very interested in is looking into the future, and I feel like we, the ship is steered in the right direction and going to be continuing that way, I have full confidence in you leading everyone to be doing that on staff, and thank you for that very much. Question, workshops are open to the public, correct?
Yes.
So just to edit, or not edit, to add on to what Mr. Smitherman said, so if you're interested in attending the workshop and, and, you know, seeing what we talk about before the next meeting, we'd love to have you. Lastly, to piggyback on something that Commissioner, what's your name again? Just kidding. Price said, I swear. Regarding the tourism, or not the tourism, regarding the Chamber of Commerce annual meeting that they had, there was also a very special individual from our staff that was acknowledged as the Tourism Hospital Hospitality Person of the Year. Lord have mercy, no coffee for me anymore. Sandra Jansen from our very own airport was acknowledged as that Person of the Year, and I just want to say congratulations to her, she is such a fine contribution, or she shows such a fine contribution to our county as a great example and a greeter for Onslow County when people come in to visit us, and I just want to thank her for her hard work and recognize her for her acknowledgement from the community. Lastly is the airport in general, I didn't say anything during the two items that we had on the agenda, but I want to say, I feel as though the airport is something that we all look at and take for granted as a real contributor to the economic development of our county, but I want to just say again, we are so grateful and we're so excited for not only the current economic development, but the future economic development opportunities that it is providing for us, so thank you all out there for your hard work, and have a good week.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Vice Chairman?
I just want to say hello to Angela Lee, it's good to see you, it's been a long time, it's been several years, you were on board when I came, when I first got elected, so it's good to see you, and I don't think Rick Grant gets enough credit, he's at, he's at every meeting, he's from North Topsail Beach, he's the alderman, I mean, he doesn't have to come here, but he drives the 20-plus miles to be here, and I just wanted to know, I appreciate you seeing you at every meeting, in fact, you're a fixture, I know you're going to be here either with you or your wife, and I don't think you've ever missed a meeting, so I appreciate that. David, the BOC retreat, I didn't like it at all, I actually loved it, so I just wanted to let you know that. I didn't think I was going to like it, and I knew I threw you off a little bit, right? But anyway, when I went there, we, the way you coordinated that retreat was awesome. I mean, we got so much done in what, five hours? We weren't arguing with each other, we weren't bickering, we were discussing things like adults, like which we should do all the time, and we came to some really good conclusions. I even seen you get excited a couple of times with the wordage, the verbiage that we were using and some catchphrases, so that was one of the better meeting workshops I've ever attended, and I want to thank you and the staff and, I don't know where she is, Angie's back there for, for helping put this on, and I really, really enjoyed that, and thank you so much for it, and I learned a lot, I learned a lot, and, and I will say this, because Lisa doesn't want me to say it, but our facilitator for that was a Florida State graduate, so I just want you to know that. Now she goes, now she's at UNC, so she's kind of a traitor, but anyway. One of the things we didn't talk about is, we just recently had an accreditation for our health department, and I think that went really well, did it not, Chrissy? We talked with the people from, from Raleigh, North Carolina, and I think they were overall impressed with our health department and what our health department is, is doing, and when they went through, and, in fact, I even heard one of them say, we're kind of like the model from North Carolina in terms of having the commissioners as part of the health board and working with the health, you know, the health director and stuff, so that's big kudos, and I was proud to be a part of that. I know Tim and I, the chairman, went and answered some questions, and we were pretty honest about it, and I think they were very, very impressed, so thank you, Chrissy, for everything you've done and for your staff. And the last thing is, just wanted to touch base on the rezoning that took place today. So, you know, I heard two people say the same thing, that it was a done deal, let me reemphasize, you know, rezoning can be really boring to most people, but it's not boring to us because it affects the citizens or a certain part of our population, and just because a boring, or a rezoning board unanimously approves a particular rezoning request, it doesn't mean it's going to get approved by us. And I know most of the commissioners read some of the emails, I read some of the emails, I had phone calls, I talked with people, and it's good to see the citizens be concerned about their area, to, to write these petitions, to get these signatures, and so, as I said before, you know, we, as, as a commissioner, I'm a conservative, what do you, I guess the right word is, a conservative developer, I mean, I believe in expansion, I believe that we need to do some of the things that we're doing in this county, as Commissioner Buchanan has stated in the past, those are some great accomplishments, and I was part of those, some of those, but we need to be conservative in our approach, and we need to listen to the citizens, that's what it's about, and you know, it's kind of hard to argue when you have 350 citizens that are voicing their concern, I just can't turn my ear to that and say, okay, I want to disregard what you said, because that's not what it's about. So when these planning boards come up, we do like take a look at them, we have questions, and if we agree, we agree, if we disagree, we disagree, but I just wanted to explain that to you, and I'm happy for the Hubert citizens that came, and I thank them for coming out and being bold enough to write the emails and to speak to each, to each of us today and tell us what they thought. Other than that, I want to say thank you to all that have come, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just to continue to beat that horse, the workshop was fantastic.
Yep.
Really got a lot of work done, a lot of teamwork, vision, mission, next steps, including workshops every month that are going to be essential to continue to make Onslow County a great place to work, live, and raise your family. Goes back to teamwork, the teamwork in this, this community and the teamwork of county government is what makes it such a great place to be. Onslow County is in the best position it's been in historically, financially, and we've got some opportunities, and this board will work hard to make sure we do the right thing as we move forward. Some people say we're in shambles, but I can assure you, we are in great shape. If Onslow County was not what it, what it is, then we wouldn't be facing growth at the rate that we're facing it. People would be exiting Onslow County, but people are coming to Onslow County, so that's something that the county should be proud of, is we are a destination for people to relocate and make their home and build their forever home. This week, we have a lot of things, or this month, a lot of things going on over at the chamber, with February being Black History Month, the chamber has the Black History Professional Development Day, have the Black History Month African-American Heritage Trail event will be taking place at the chamber, and then the Second Annual Black History Celebration will be occurring around February 18 at Sturgeon, Sturgeon City. So lots of activity going on this month, and to have the opportunity to attend those, take that opportunity to be a part of that. With that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
We are adjourned.